Kathy, do we have a date for next one?
Uh, no, not yet. I was thinking March 10th, but up to you guys.
That looks fine.
I have a couple of hearings already.
Calendar that while we have it. Um, and again, well, just in terms of housekeeping business, like to go ahead and make a motion to approve our minutes from our last hearing. Get a second on that.
Second, Barbara.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor? Bob?
Barbara and I.
And Ruguchi, I.
And myself, Jennifer Platt, I. Alright, so minutes done. And Kathy, I may not see because we have, we've got on the screen, I can't see all the participants, which is fine, but.
You want me to stop sharing?
No, that's, that's fine. I just want you to let me know when we have.
I think all the applicants are here.
Um, but I was waiting for our last board member. Did?
We have the P U and Bob.
Is Frank coming?
I don't know. I haven't heard from him.
Alright. Well, given where we are, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. The first hearing we have is for 46 Abbott Road. The virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM on the petition of Joanna Rec representing the homeowner, Thomas W. Goddard Jr., 46 Abbott Road, North Reading, MA, map 15 parcel 25 for a variance to construct a 30 by 23 addition for the setback requirements of the potential and density regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws. And we have, Kathy, if you want to go ahead and move that down to the site plan, so that's up.
Oh, okay.
Do you want me to give a little introduction of the project?
I would love you to. Is this Rec?
Alright, so I'm Joanna Rec. I am the architect on this project, and I believe the clients are here as well, or the homeowners are here. So what we have is an existing non-conforming lot, which is pretty funky. It's very, very long and very, very narrow, as a lot of the other houses in this neighborhood are. And so the house is existing non-conforming. And, you know, if we were to comply with setbacks, we've got probably about 250 square feet on this lot that's actually buildable by right. So what we're proposing to do is add a 30 by 22 garage by extending the existing sides of the house as they are to the lot. So we're not sort of going out further than the existing house, but just by the nature of the lot, it's going to be an existing, or it's going to be a non-conforming addition. And we looked at sort of going up over the existing house, but it just became budget restrictive. It was just too much money. This, the house is a whole bunch of little houses that have just been added on to over the years. It's a cottage, really. So the construction is pretty funky, and it would just take a lot more than we want to put into, to get the space out. So we're doing a garage with master suite above and another bedroom, as we're losing a bedroom to get the connector piece. And there's just not really any other place to put more square footage on this lot.
And then it also looks like there's a little bit of an addition on the, must be the westerly side or eastern on the side.
It says. Right, so we're, so the front door, it's a really funky house. So you're kind of coming up on the side of the house. So bedrooms are, if you're looking at this diagram, the bedrooms are on the left-hand side, and the front door is sort of where in the center of this house. So you kind of, when you drive up, you don't see the front door. So again, we're trying to, you know, save a little bit of money and not redo the hole inside. So what we've done is made a covered porch on the right-hand side, or sort of the lower side, with some stairs to sort of try to make this sort of an entry that, as you're coming up to the garage, that will do a walkway or something, so that we're trying to lead people to the front door, not be faced with this garage door.
There, I know. And I think that there was some.
There's an existing little portico there, so we're just, we're coming out the same amount. We're just making it a little longer.
There were some elevations included in your package. If, um.
I have them. Do you want me to share my screen?
Sure.
Okay. Hang on. Here. Yeah. Okay, so these are the floor plans. And so here's this covered porch right now, the front door. Can you guys see my cursor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so right now, the front, the front door is walking into this family room. So we're taking over a bedroom and making a mudroom that connects the garage to the rest of the house. And we're, we're moving the covered porch down. There is a covered porch here, right, a little one right here. Now we're just shifting it down. And the elevations. So this is now what you see. So this is now what you're seeing as you're coming in. So we're not going any wider. I did want to sort of have the covered porch be obvious. This is farther back, but I wanted the covered porch to be obvious so that this becomes sort of the front door entry, so that it's not all garage, which looks like this on the right-hand side as you're coming up. And I've kept the, even because the house is just a one-story, I've kept the roof low with this and done a shed dormer, so that it sort of hopefully reads still as a, as a, it's not like a colonial box built two-story with a roof on top of it. I tried to keep the ceiling heights low, so it sort of ties in with the neighborhood and also with the house.
That's appreciated. Absolutely.
Yeah. And. Let me know if you have any questions. So we've got a kind of funky lot. It's kind of, it's, it's this side of the house over here. So the left side of the house is, if you're approaching the house, is really, it's, it goes up. It's kind of a steep slope here. Yeah, and then, so this is sort of our only little flat area to work with.
Let me open it up to the board, see if anyone has questions.
So the existing property house, excuse, this is Bob. So the existing house is, is it more or less a ranch? Or is there a lower thing? Okay.
There's a basement to it, but it's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you guys see the photo?
Either what?
Do you see a photo on my screen?
No, we still see the, the elevation.
Drawings. Alright, let me just do something, just share. Yeah. Alright, so this is what the driveway and the house looks like now.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay, so you're gonna be, I get it. We're adding the garage. We're adding a level above it.
Yeah. We're, we're. And we talked about doing, we talked about doing extra bedrooms, sort of instead of doing a garage and adding bedroom, but it's just impossible to get from here to there. Basically, we're just moving, you know, we're just sort of adding bedrooms where we don't need them, and it's harder to get into the house. It's just an awkward, really tough, tough lot. Awkward situation.
It is long and narrow.
Very.
And you have slope to deal with.
So, yeah, as you look at this photo now, just out of, just for aesthetics, just curious, because if you look at these tree lines that are on the upper and on the, effectively towards the rear, that just passed that shed, I mean, how, where the, where the driveway starts to slope up, you're talking about building out to where, where the slope, where the, where the driveway is level. Currently.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know.
And.
Yeah, so we're just gonna basically come out here, like, pardon my awful sketch, but, yeah. So we're gonna, we're gonna dig into the hill here. Right now, the grade goes right down. I mean, you know, the shingles are almost buried. So as we're doing this, we'll probably trench out a little bit and make this a better water runoff condition. So water can run down around it.
That was the question I was going at. So in terms of the, the topographical adjustments that you're going to need in order to put a flat foundation, a flat, level foundation in.
Yeah.
Is it, is there any topography designs that, or is there any report, or is it, is the new construction?
No, I mean, so what, what I think we'll do, I guess what I'm talking about more is fixing what's there. But what we're gonna do for the garage is obviously we'll step the foundation. So this side of the foundation will be a retaining wall that the grade will butt into. So we're not gonna mess with this grade at all. We're just gonna lose this retaining wall and just move it, you know, this, this will be here. But as we're doing this, I think we need to sort of fix the existing, what's there. So just, right now, there's just sort of a little, uh.
Naturally made slope.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That's just how the water runs right now.
Yeah, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna do any kind of serious grading whatsoever. We're just gonna step the foundation so that the existing grade works with our new addition.
Because obviously, I'm just curious if there's gonna be a, a change in the water run towards those lower properties on Abbott.
Not significantly by any stretch. And we have quite a lot per, I think that was our. We were in the Aquaphor district, and we're, we're well within our, we have actually a lot of land. It's just in a weird spot, so we are impervious. Is, is okay.
And on your site plan, does it show where, where the Aquaphor district, where the overlay is? I didn't, I don't see.
I think it only exists, the only note of it is, I think, within the materials for the proposed addition drawing on that we have.
I think I saw calculations on it showing that it was well under.
Yeah. So I have the GIS map here. Hopefully, I just shared it.
Yes.
So our, yep, so our, I'm getting better at this. Our lot is right here, so you can see how funky all these guys are, but this, I think this is, maybe this doesn't show the Aquaphor district, but it was sort of like this area.
Joanna, you should be able to get onto the layers and put the.
This is just, this is just a screenshot of it, unfortunately. Yeah.
Kathy, can you, do you have access? Can you show where the?
Um, yes, hold on.
That would be great.
Where's the septic on this?
It's in the backyard.
Yeah, so and you're not, nothing's happening in the back. It's all in the front.
Exactly, which is another reason why this is, why we chose this location for an addition, because it really is the only place for it to go.
There's the lot right here. Am I unmuted?
I'm sorry.
There's a lot right here.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the, in terms of the layering, okay, so.
So this is one floodplain, another floodplain, and this might be Aquaphor out here.
Okay. And you can see where the house is, not the, the houses are in the middle, and all the addition is going in front towards the street. Okay. Alright, so we're out of, so we're out of the overlay area. Where was it? Building height, building coverage, open space. We're gonna, you're gonna be at, per the drawing, 5% lot coverage, so you're well under.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Alright. Then, any questions or comments on this?
No, I don't have any questions. So.
Are you? Oh.
No. No, just, uh.
We did have one letter from the butter who I believe is the butter to, was it 40? They might have been, so to the left, but is it two to the left or one? Yeah, so we had a email sent in from Jennifer and Brian Reedy at 40 Abbott Road, who indicate that they couldn't attend the meeting, but they are in support of the, of the addition. Is, just looking at the, the map we had out a second ago, 40 Abbott, is that a direct to butter or is that two over?
I think it's two over. Megan?
Two.
Yeah, that's two over. I think one over said she tried to send something, but she wasn't sure if it went through. 42 tried to send something, but I don't know. Anita Castellano.
We didn't get that. We did get something from the Reedies who are in support and.
You see it right here?
Okay.
It's 40.
Says 40, alright, and.
And they're over here.
Got it. Um, do we have anyone else at the public hearing who wants to comment on this?
There was someone here. Danica Reed? I don't know.
Danica Reed, do we know which hearing she is here for?
No.
Danica, if you can hear us, and you're here for this hearing.
Hi, this is, this is Glenn Reed. I live on City Street. And I was just checking in to see what the, what the addition was about. It, it sounds great to me. It sounds fine.
Alright, good luck to hear that. And I think that is, oh, that's, that's the world of our attendees on this hearing.
What was that gentleman's name? Do you know? Reed.
Hope to get that from the recording. Unless, unless they would like to tell you again, and their address. They said they were on Center or Central. Alright, that being said, I agree you have a tricky lot to work with, and I am, it looks like this is a thoughtful addition to the property, like how you, you are able to kind of keep with the, with the, the frame, the sort of the scope of the building in, in terms of the roof line. That looks like a very nice addition to that property. So I would, I would be in support of this. I have no other questions. If, unless, there's no other questions from the board, I'd like to close the hearing and then make a motion on this.
Second to close the, the hearing?
I will, I'm not sure if you seconded or just made that motion, but, but I will, I'll do the other one, whatever it was. To me, I will second that if you made that motion. Alright, and I believe, where's this, that's a, that's a tight fit. So I would like to make a motion to propose to grant a variance from, what's our, what are our requirements? We need 25 on the side.
On both sides.
So you'll need 11 feet from the, what was, this is upside down, so from the westerly sideline and go over here, we need 11 feet from the easterly sideline. Is that right?
Sounds right.
Um, to build a two-story addition in accordance with the plans that were submitted by the applicant. Do I have a second on that?
Uh, Barbara, second.
Is 11 gonna be enough, Jen?
Yeah, it should, should be. I mean, if the.
Up where the addition meets the house, it's only 10.
Okay, you go. I was looking at the, the, at the distance closest to the road. And you're right, so thanks, Kathy. Good call. Going back here by the, where the porch is, you're going to need 14, and that's the west side. How's that look on numbers? 14 on west, 10 on east. Do we need more anywhere? Actually, this close, no, you're tighter on that. The, I keep looking out at the, the corner closest to the street.
Right, so on the upper, so on the west side, the existing is 11.7. We're growing it to 14.2. And then on the other side, the existing is 16.9, but then we're, we're doing the five foot, so that would be like 11, that's that 11.5. So it looks like he's doing the 10.5. We have a, we've just projected out a little bit of, of the second floor. So I think that is the 10.5 that we're just projecting on the second floor to get a little bit more room for a tub.
Okay, so.
So should the, the grant of the motion detail from the shortest point and, and, and allow for larger or vice versa?
Yes, so it needs 15 on the east and 14 on the west. That sounds right. Well, the, the north-south arrow is going north is actually the bottom of the page.
Oh, gosh, I'm, I'm backwards then, too. Sorry about that. I was thinking north was up.
Yeah.
How many zoning board members are needed?
Survey?
So I, I think we have that now, and just double checking here, it's planned. So if you have 14 on the west, 15, which is on the east, even another, because it's upside down. That should do it.
You have a second? Oh, did we vote already?
No, we haven't.
Alright, so.
We're revising the proposed grant.
How do we feel about that motion now, folks?
Do we get a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Barbara and I.
Then Ruguchi, I.
Jennifer Platt, I. Alright, congratulations. There's a 20-day appeal period. After that, you can pick up your stamp appearance. Are people picking these up now, Kathy, or do we mail them out with the COVID situation?
So I mail out the copy of the decision, and I have to come into the town clerk to get a certified copy after 20 days.
Okay.
And they have to record that at the registry.
We, we have to record that, or it gets recorded?
You need to.
The owner or whoever has to record it.
Okay, good job. Got it. Thank you for your time, guys.
Absolutely.
Good night.
Good luck. Enjoy your new addition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night. Alright, Bob, do you want to read the second one in?
Sure.
Give me a second. Regarding a continued virtual hearing to be held on February 10th, today, 2022, petition of Jose G. Sa for a special permit to run a construction landscaping business located at 340 Main Street, North Reading, Mass, map 12 parcel 53.
Thank you, and I believe we have Mr. Pinta here today. I was very pleased to see last time I drove by that you've made miraculous thing happen by getting rid of all so many old vehicles that have been parked there. So thank you very much for taking.
You're welcome. Good evening to you all. Yeah, just to update you, the last few times I've been reporting about what's been going on with the eviction of, I think it was J and R landscaping that was there, that was creating the problems. So we do have possession. Mr. Sa has taken possession back. The reason that stuff is gone is the tenant got rid of some of his equipment, and Mr. Sa had to actually, unfortunately, pay the dumpster company that the prior tenant was renting the dumpster, and he hadn't paid, of course, and we had to work out an arrangement to get the dumpster and all the debris off the site. So it, unfortunately, because the COVID took a lot longer than I think it normally would have, but we're at least at the point now where I think the property looks decent. And Mr. Sa has also done things, started his repair work. He's done things like replaced the roof, repaired some siding, so that I think the building looks a lot better, too. I'm a little bit confused. I, I think what's, that's, I'm just reporting to you, but what I think is before you people tonight is my client wants to, he's trying to get a special permit so that he can put, store some of his own equipment behind the property. I haven't been involved in that part. I was really involved in the eviction, and I really wanted to report back to you as a result of that. But I know he wants to be heard, and I'll help out where I can. And if there's more information that's needed subsequent to this hearing, I'll help him get you what you need so that he can store the equipment that he wants there. But Joe, if you could explain to the board exactly what it is that you need the special permit for, what you want to store there, where you're gonna store it, and how?
Yes, of course, yeah. Uh, thank you, Mike. So what do we need basically there? It's just a few spots behind the building for one pickup truck or two, two pickup trucks and one, one is small mini excavator and one is small bobcat and one trailer. So that's a basic, our tools in there, and what we are planning to do is we are planning to build private fans. So that way, when Korean eyes are, so people won't see it on the outside. That's what I'm planning to do, do more, more cleanup around. And I actually asked Kathy if I was gonna be able to, if I can, like, on the side of the property, if I can put a new kind of gravel in there, so it would cover all the, all, you know, all the mud that we actually have there, because as of now, we're spending a lot of money trying to fix the property, make it look better, you know, landscape-wise, too, you know, cutting the trees on the sidewalk and do a little cleanup there and fix the pavement, so we can get a better rental there, and I'm trying to get a better people over there now. That's what basically we are trying to do now.
So, and I've heard from the, from the building inspector that you had been, I thought, planning to put a, a repair shop back in, auto repair shop back at the premises?
Yes, right. I got a potential tenant, and I actually. Yes, right. I got a potential tenant and I actually gave Jared's number so he could call. And he has a shop nearby. It's, it's Wilmington. It's, it's very close by. Actually, I went to the shop last week and it, it, it looks very nice. Looks very clean. Some expensive cars over there, like a BMW, Mercedes. So he had, you know, he's very nice and clean. So he's, he's kind of interested in and on renting that, that, the, the, the whole building, actually. So it, it would make it easier. So I don't have to deal with like a multiple tenants. So just one tenant there. So I think it would be nice for us.
Just so you know, this tenant is, is called Euro's Car Center and they're located right now in Wilmington. And I've looked at some pictures online and it looks like a pretty good operation that they have there. My understanding is their lease is coming up, expiring in the Wilmington location, and that's why he's looking to potentially move into Joe's space.
Good to know. The, and we'd be happy to hear about that when, when the, the time is right for that. And I'm to take a look at the, just looking at our bylaws here, I think the, the issue with storage of the equipment is that it's not going to be permitted. But before I say that, I know we've got our building inspectors here and will give me a minute to take a look back at our zoning bylaws, but he may be able to just apply to that. And I think we've run into this before on this, in this stretch. Repair can be allowed by special permit.
It may. It is definitely not an allowed use. It's not listed. If it's not listed, it's considered prohibited. Landscaping would be something different. Could, you could have landscaping. But that would be once again by special.
And I think that something that we've been struggling with and trying to clean up as we go is the difference between a retail business that would be a landscaping business and as part of their business, they would have some of their vehicles parked there versus just simply parking, which is what we're really trying to, and our, our building inspector has been working to try to work towards removing those from businesses along Main Street because it's, it's not permitted and for somehow it just seemed to blossom over, over the years. So.
Jerry, is that have you ever encountered a situation where it wasn't the garage or enclosed parking? It's not open and obvious. Is that addressed by the parking restriction?
You lost me with that question, if you could.
So he's talking about putting up a fence to all but hide the parking of the, I think a bobcat and a truck, but if it was an enclosed structure, like a garage that looked no different than any other residential garage, while it's still housing and parking vehicles?
Oh, I got you. I got you.
The way of the, you know.
Bays? Is that the, the point? Like if.
Yeah, he, he's talking about putting those in the bays, but it would, it is still considered construction. It's a construction vehicle. And he's putting in a, he's putting in heavy equipment, correct? Because you'd have a skid steer or you'd have a backhoe, a small backhoe? What was that?
Yeah, it's, it is a small mini excavator.
Yeah, so you'd have a mini excavator there. So and heavy construction vehicles, just I know, they are prohibited.
How do you know that?
Yeah, landscaping is allowed. So that's only by special permit.
Yeah, but those, those equipment, Jerry, we also using those on, like a landscape business, too.
That is correct. That is absolutely correct, but that, that is not up to me to decide. That's up to the zoning board of appeals.
Uh huh. All right.
Okay, because it'd be, because it is, it is part of the business. Totally agree with the landscaping.
Yeah. And besides that, we don't keep it there all the time. Like, as of now, I've been out there, I don't, I, I always keep my, my equipment on the job site and for example, I haven't parked in there for the last eight months. So it's, it's kind of, it, it's kind of never there. So it might be there for a couple of days, then I take it out again. So it, it is not really parking there all the time. That's my point, too.
Be honest with you, I've never seen it. I go by there almost every day.
Got it. Yeah. So that's, that's why, why for this, because when we go, like I finished one of it, I, I move it to the other job, then maybe I'll be there one day only, then I, I just move it out again. So, so that way I don't need to buy another property just for this purpose. So, because I, I can do that now. It is very hard.
So I would, the fact that it hasn't triggered a, a issue with Mr. Noel is great. I think that's very positive. I'm not and maybe it's a, a way of sort of phrasing this, that if this is really for the business. But if this is going to be the, the home for your landscaping business and there's some trucks that are, or equipment that's associated with it, then, you know, that it's definitely going to impact what, you know, something else that's anything else at the property. So if you're thinking about this property as being a auto repair facility, which again can be allowed by special permit, I don't think we want to be allowing the landscape, I mean, it's sort of allowing a landscaping business there in part. I mean, I, I think that was the issue with this site before is that it started getting divvied up and having net multiple users on one site, which really overburdened the property.
Yeah, right. Yes, when I first bought the, this property, they had like another landscape guy over there. I believe he, he had a permit, right? Mike Landscaping?
No, nobody else had a permit. There was a permit issued, but it was issued to the, to that person only, to, to the individual. Whoever was there was there basically illegally at one point in time.
Yeah. Yeah, the, yeah, because when I first rented out, I, I was, I first rented on 2014, I, I believe. So and by that time, it had a multiple people over there, like one was, I believe was boats. I saw a lot of boats over there. Then was a lot of, was a swimming company was there as well. So then I, I was like renting for like two years almost. So I, I was under the, the assumption that I could have those in there, you know? That's my point.
So the heavy construction equipment and rental is prohibited. It might be helpful if you could, you or your attorney could provide us a plan of, of how you're, of what you're proposing. I, I, I think though, we're, we're just really at a impasse with, if it's just storage of your equipment, that's not going to be allowed. If there's some business that's going to have some vehicles as part of the business, that can be allowed. But we'd want to see plans on where they're located on the property, what sort of landscaping is being proposed to screen it from the street. And we've done such a great job of cleaning this up and we want, I mean, you've done a lot of hard work. We want to work with you and make sure that you can use your property now that you've, you've gotten rid of the, the non-conforming portions of it. So I think it would be very helpful if you could come and give us something, you know, showing a plan of the premises, where things are going, so we can understand how it would be used and what it would look like.
I think I can do that. What if I, just an idea, what if I establish my office on the, in the back of the building? There is a little office over there, which I, it's always empty. And I can establish my office over there, then I can do as my, my landscape business. Would, would that be possible?
I think that would be possible. I, I definitely would want to see where any equipment that's involved in the landscaping business would be stored. I mean, again, you are the first thing people see coming into North Reading from the north. So how this looks to someone coming by is very important. And I wouldn't, you know, some fencing might be appropriate, but fencing along the roadway, just to.
That's on my plan. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Fences on my plan. Yes, I can definitely do like a drawing. Better drawing and showing where, where everything goes, how I, I'll, I'll install the fence and the gate. Then I, I'm pretty sure it will look a lot better.
Fantastic.
Can I just, can I just, I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question to the board is, does it make a difference to the board if he has an actual office in the structure versus if he's renting the whole structure out to this car repair place and has no office on site and just the equipment, landscaping equipment there? Does that make a difference at all to the board? Being the reason I asked before he answers because obviously he has control over either renting out the whole facility to potentially the car repair place or saving a spot in there so we can actually put an office in there. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, right.
And I think it does matter because the, the issue is, I mean, it's just, and it's sort of an anomaly of the bylaws where you can have a business operating there, but you can't just store vehicles. And so if he just wants to park the vehicles there, the equipment at the end of the workday, that's not allowed. But if it's part of his, you know, his business, then there's a way to make that happen under our, our oversight and our review. Like, one of the things that I would be looking at going forward is how many vehicles, what vehicles? It would be a, a specific grant. So it doesn't become a, you know, just a parking lot of old vehicles like it had been before.
Right. And the other point to keep in mind here is that with the proposal and the specificity, it lends itself to, I mean, you do have neighbors. You do have people that are going to be impacted by whatever is characterized as the business that's ongoing there. So for that purpose, being forthright and being and being clear as to the intended use of that property is, is, is paramount to that, if not required under law, especially by us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would recommend that we give a grant of continuance or that you request a continuance and then we grant it to move it out.
We would like a continuance.
Yes.
Absolutely. No, and, and I, again, I do appreciate that you are working very hard to reestablish this property, get, got site control. Now let's, we want to work with you to help.
Yep. Appreciate you acknowledging that. One, one last quick question. The, the sort of plans that you're asking Joe to put together, do these have to be, you know, architectural or landscaping design plans? Are you okay? You know, I don't think that's necessary here, but are you okay with, you know, Joe and I putting something together that answers your questions about where and what's going to be there?
I would be open to more informal plans as long as they are, you know, have, are some, have some detail and some clarity so we can see what you're doing. But no, I don't need to run out and go pay for formal plans, which.
Thank you.
Have to work with you on that. If there was, if there was going to be an addition or a change to the physical structures, then we would require plans.
No, other than the fence Joe's talking about, no.
Okay, perfect. And I think that the continuance that we were looking at, we just said March 10th. Is that right, Kathy?
Yes, that was the date I was looking at.
All right. March 10th work for the board and for.
That's okay for me. Joe, is that okay for you?
Yes, yes, sure. Yes.
If you need more time, just connect with Kathy and she can bounce, bump that.
Okay, thank you all. Good night.
Thank you. And just to keep it formal for us, I'm just, would like us to vote on that. If you need to vote on that, if we, well, let's just vote on it so we have it.
I think we have to make the date certain, yeah.
All right, we, I am making a motion to accept the request for a continuance to March 10th.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Then Raguchi, aye.
Beautiful. Jennifer Platt, aye. Thank you. All right, guys.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
You as well. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night. I am going to wish everyone well and close this hearing to run as well. So good to see you and we'll talk to you next month, if not sooner.
Night.
Good night, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks.